Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our City Council Special Meeting for September 23rd. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can all please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members, please. Thank you. May be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Councilmember Upo.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Semmer.
Present.
Mayor Moran.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Roth and Councilmember Wallace are non-attendance.
Council, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we're moving forward. Next, we have citizen comments. At a special meeting, members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time. Note: Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. Is there any citizen comments on... Is there anyone on the phone? Hearing none, coming back to the chamber. Is there any citizen comments in the chamber? Seeing none, closing the citizen comments at 6:11. Next, we have the Conflict of Interest Declaration. Members of the City Council will declare an actual or apparent conflict of interest before discussion or decisions about any matters in which they are or any... in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit or with such a benefit could be perceived. Seeing none, we're moving forward. Next, we have Vision and Goal Setting Workshop, and we have Mr. Paul Pierce as the facilitator.
Yes, I've... Council, I just want to thank Mr. Paul Pierce. He's widely known here in the Central Valley and probably all the state. And we very much... I know he's super busy, but he made some time for Livingston, and we're very appreciative of him being here, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Jose. Welcome. My name is Paul Pierce. You may have noticed I'm not the basketball player, if you thought that was the case, but I'm giving you a freebie. Go home and tell your kids you had a dinner with Paul Pierce tonight, okay? So, and I've got the ID to prove it. I had it before he was born, quite a while before he was born. But anyways, enough of that. I am who I am. So, I have found that projects work a whole lot better when we have an idea of who's in the room. And I think if we actually took time to thoroughly introduce each other, we'd be here till sometime tomorrow. But it's really important just to check in, so I'm going to ask you to check in with no more than five words, okay? So pick them wisely, five words to describe your relationship with the city, what's important, your role, if you have a specific role with the city at this point, okay? So, and so I'll give you an example. My name is Paul Pierce. I'm a facilitator. And after talking to Jose about your city, I couldn't wait to get here and hopefully at least be a little bit a part of what you're doing, so.
And Paul, did you want the council to go to the...
If you all would come down and join us, that would be great. You're... You have valuable input, right? Okay. So, all right. Shortly.
Okay, I didn't know I was going to be the first one, okay. Carmen Fuentes-Gutierrez, I've been a volunteer with the school districts in our town for 30 years, and I also been, yeah, been around.
All right, okay. So we're... I'm going to cut you short, and if you hear something that's really interesting, follow up, you know? These are really good people, and we'll be looking into it. So.
Luz Estela Estrada. I volunteer here at Livingston.
Thank you. Okay.
Martha Zamora, Livingston resident.
R.C. Cruz, HR Coordinator for the City of Livingston.
John Ramirez, Livingston Police Department.
Hey, my name is Paz Engage, resident, creative, caring.
Thank you.
John, Livingston resident, work from home.
Mercy, also Livingston resident, work from home.
Renee Mendonza, Vice Chair for the Planning Commission. Grew up here, gonna retire here.
Dan Mendonza, resident, retired.
Thank you, Dan.
Jesus Chavez, Water Waste Manager here for the City of Livingston.
Michaelo Calvez, City Planner.
Martha Avalos, Senior Admin Analyst for the City of Livingston.
Jose Flores, Planning Commissioner and Public Servant.
Steve Bassey, Planning Commission Chair.
Dyo Castillo, Real Estate Investor, Developer/Builder, Business Owner and Resident.
Linda Placencia, Parks and Recreation Commissioner.
Chris Fernandez, Park and Rec Commissioner, parent.
Annabelle Perez, Parent, Teacher, Parks and Rec Commissioner.
Jackie Benoit, Recreation Superintendent.
And everybody knows who you are, but what do you want to be tonight? So this is your answer for tonight. And we're politicians, but it's five words, okay? So I know that means point.
Mark Barasatran, from my five words, City Attorney, don't sue us.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jose Ramirez. I'm the City Manager, and I am inspired, energized, enthusiastic, and would like to implement all your ideas in the future.
Gorbal Tamar, Mayor Pro Tim. I just want to say to the attorney, don't invoice us.
Good evening, everyone. Jose Moran, Mayor for the City of Livingston, also a middle school educator and resident for a long time of the Central Valley.
Good evening, everyone. Jupit Singh Paul, City Councilmember and Lifetime Resident.
Well, what a group of people. As a former Planning Commissioner and Chair of the Planning Commissioner, I sympathize with y'all. It's a good task, and I've worked for the City of Fresno for 21 years, doing many of the jobs I've heard you describe. So I... My heart is with you, and I really appreciate your service. And that's not just a phrase, okay? So, there's going to be three things we're going to do tonight. I'm going to try to hold this easel up behind me. And the first is, it's called an appreciative inquiry. I used to do a lot of work with organizations where we'd put on all the walls all the stuff that's screwed up, you know? And then we would prioritize those and decide which are the most screwed up. And then, if a bee lands on you, don't move. That's the rule, because they bite you if you do. And there's a bee here. And then, and then I would prioritize those, and we would take the top three, and we'd come up with a plan, and then we'd head straight for the nearest bar after that. Because it's depressing, and it's hard, but it's true. But what I've found is that when we look at what we've got that's good and what we want more of, we can come up with some of the same answers, but we walk out with energy instead of having the energy go away. So it's called appreciative inquiry, and this first quest is that. So you have a little worksheet in front of you, and I have a request about these. So this, the first one says "Appreciative Interview Guide" on it, the kind of yellow text on the top. And before you go into that, if you're willing, I'd like you to put your name and contact information on the back of this so that we can follow up. We're going to collect these to make sure that your voice is included in the process of creating this vision, okay? So if you're not comfortable with that, that's okay, but we would love it if you would give us your name so we can do that, okay? And don't shoo the bee. Okay, all right. So what... Way this works is, I would like you to pair up with somebody, and ideally, it works even better if you pair up with somebody that you haven't met yet. Because I'll tell you, in spite of the fact that we look at roles and responsibilities and assignments and tasks, it's really relationships. It's relationships that build a community, that make a community, that make a community vital. And every chance I find to get to make new relationships makes a stronger community. So if you can find... Maybe some of you know everybody in the room, but if you can find somebody you haven't met yet, then sit down, and you have just 10 minutes to go through this first section, "Appreciative Interview Guide." So basically, tell me about a time you felt proud of Livingston, when people came together and something good happened. What were the values? What resources or relationships made it possible? And your contribution, and what are you doing? And then, looking ahead, what do you hope for? So 10 minutes isn't very long to have that discussion. This is the beginning of a process of creating a clear vision sense. So, and the way the boost works best, I'm going to tell you right now. Everybody, please stand up. It's been a long day. I want to appreciate that. It's been a long day already, and it's going on wrong here, okay? So, do like the ET thing. Put your finger in the air. Find somebody you don't know. As soon as you find them, sit down so you can talk. That way, they're not leftovers, but the people still look and can find somebody. Okay? So as soon as you find a partner, sit down. If you're standing, you're looking. No wrong answers here. All right. If you're looking, if you're standing, you're looking, grab a partner. Are you going to talk to each other, or are you looking for partners? Okay, as soon as you find somebody, sit down, yeah. Okay. Okay. Do you need a partner? Could I be your partner if they're... Oh, do you need a partner? Oh, you got one. Okay, there's four of you. Can you... Yeah, go there, okay. All right. 10 minutes to cover this. Ready, go.
Five minutes left. Five minutes.
Five minutes left, five minutes. Don't make me ring it twice, okay? I wish you could have heard what I heard because, and I didn't hear any real words, but I heard the sound of a community in conversation. And all too often, we hear the sound of communities complaining, particularly if we're sitting up here in the dais. We hear the sound of people making speeches if we're sitting in the crowd. But conversation is a unique thing. So it sounded so rich. There's actually a name for it. It's called petcha cucha. There are a bunch of, it's another story. I love stories. Try to keep me on track here. It's a mutual thing. Also, I just want to tell you, if any of you are in the witness protection program, kind of quietly let me know because I've been taking some snapshots of you in action. And I'll be sure I'm doing, I don't publish any of this stuff, but I just kind of like to record what's going on. So just let me know, I'll be really cool about that. So the question then is, you know, what did you hear? What did you hear? And you know, the assignment was one-on-one and some of you did that and some of you did one-on-five and you know, that's the way it works. It's good, it's good, you know, the conversation. But so I think just real quickly, going around the room, what kind of experiences happened that prompted your feelings, your good feelings about Livingston? And the key here is specific, not just there was a meeting I went to, but there was a meeting when somebody really listened to me and they acted on what I said. Or our neighborhood got together and had a party. Okay, and we talked about problems in the neighborhood and started to solve them. So some specifics. And what I'd like to do is from each table, to just get one of your experiences, we're going to go around a couple of times, but one of the experiences that you heard about that was really impressive, that says, wow, why isn't Paul Pierce moving here? Right? Okay, so from this table, what was one of the experiences that you heard about? No wrong answers here.
So what we collectively, if we're going off of the first question there, tell us.
That's right.
Yeah, tell me about a time you felt proud of Livingston. Collectively amongst our group, we said the sport, the building of the sports complex.
Uh huh, okay.
And why that was, it brought families together, it brought the community together, kids that can, you know, have something to look forward to when it comes to different activities or sports. So that was one of the things that we all agreed on.
Okay, and we're going to come around and let you talk about another one, but how many, how many other people talked about the sports complex? Did that come up in any other tables? Yeah, okay, so, yeah, okay. So what was one of the things that you heard in your conversation about why Livingston's the best place to be? So you did the listening?
Yes.
Okay. Let me give you the microphone.
Yes, got big ears. So something that came up was the various community events and to get specific, parades, National Day Out, which I had the privilege of attending. Again, these community events that bring people out and provide that forum for people to connect.
Table back here. What was one of the stories, what was one of the experiences that really captured your attention? Yeah, go ahead. There's microphones, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Well, anyway, to me, there was actually more than one, but the most one was right after 9/11, when there was a lot of confusion on who's Muslims and who's are Sikhs. The community came together behind the communities that are over there at the Sommerhorn School to where the people said, we stand with you guys, we know who you are. To me, having a national tragedy turn into something good at the local level was really, really great.
Thank you, perfect example, perfect example. And at this table, what was one of the things that really captured your attention?
Mine kind of went way back, but I've been here a long time. Livingston Medical Group. It was a healthcare facility that was started by Gallo businessmen, and I do believe Stanford was involved as well, to start low-income migrant workers, to provide them with medical care because our migrant workers pick our fruit and that's, that's the core of this community. And to make that come to fruition and for the community to come together and they realize that, that is, and it's still to this day, it's service that it provides, something that migrant workers can't find anyplace else.
Thank you. Table back here.
We talked about the July event, have you had?
Yeah.
I know we were discussing how it's good to see the community come together.
Let me hand you this. Your voice is pretty darn loud.
Exactly. So just watching the community come together at the 4th of July event is pretty, it's something that I look forward to every year, even though sometimes I gotta, I gotta be out, but it's, it's good to see the vendors out there and just the staff that makes it happen. And then just inviting the different people that come out, the businesses and everybody that kind of helps out. It's good to see that and you know, we're all celebrating our country and just, you know, having good music and just having a good time.
Great, okay, thank you. And this table?
I wanted to mention.
Use the microphone, yeah, please.
I wanted to mention, talks about going back. I'm talking about going back 61 years ago, when we were little children and my grandparents were farmers. So for them being Mexican and being farmers, that was a big deal for Livingston. And they would have a party like where the town literally, people know, and it wasn't just family, literally came from Father Francie, if anybody remembers who Father Francie was, he'd be sitting there, having his little beer. And literally, when you talk about community, you know, killing the animals and, you know, preparing the food, my grandmother showing us how to make buñuelos and just, so you talk about community from way back, that, that is very distinct when, when what we're talking about today. So just wanted to bring that up, that how things have evolved and how things have changed, what does that mean today and so.
And what, so that's a really good thing to consider, you know, because there's some folks here who've been here longer and some folks who've been here an hour now, okay, and a range, but, and you know, there's that thing, oh, well, that was then, you know, and that was then, and there were, if it's, if we can still remember it, there was something really useful and special about that. Maybe it doesn't exactly fit what's going on now, but what were the characteristics, what were the values? And I heard you talk about community and coming together and learning together and sharing culture. So those kind of things, as we look at that, that's, that's the value of this thing. What was one of the things that came from your table?
Well, is it on?
Thank you. Well, as Jose pointed out, back in, I was raised here in Livingston, we came from Willow Glen, so we came from San Jose to Livingston, so that was a great cultural shock for us. But being a part of the community, I worked for Starbucks for many, many years. So I saw you all first. I gave you your coffee, I served you. And someone reached out under the watchful eye of Jose, city code enforcement. They put me under their wing and I came on through a city grant. And that's what first opened my eyes to actually being a part of the community. So the growth there personally for myself and, you know, becoming a part of the working elements in Livingston, I think inspired me to, of course, start there and move forward. And now I'm with Jackie, with Parks and Rec, and just making it happen for our kids, like, you know, events. We need events, we need laughter, especially now, you know, we can never, ever, ever give that up. We need our children's, our children involved.
Excellent, excellent. So I'm thinking about one.
Can I just add one?
Of course, yeah.
Here, Annie.
So I wanted to just share that I love it when the city council recognizes our young, our young, I don't know, our young children. Young students at the Livingston High School, anytime they have an accomplishment. And then you can come to the city hall meeting and you'll see families that you don't typically see here and, you know, it's a great time, the students feel really proud of themselves and just you can think about everything that has to come together for those kids to be able to be as successful as they are. They have to have, you know, all of the support from their coach and from their parents to make sure that they get everywhere that they need to be. And I think that that's kind of also an opportunity for people who don't normally participate to come to a city hall meeting and to maybe check it out a little bit.
How many of you on the council now came to a meeting before in that context? Anybody? As a student or? Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Yes, so, so if we were to just take, and I, one quick round, what was one of the values that you felt like this? So I'm hearing community, a sense of community and it, and it's, that's not just a word, it's a relationship, people in relationships supporting and helping each other, yeah? What other kind of values came out of the stories that you listened to? No wrong answers here. I don't ask questions with wrong answers, okay? So you don't have to worry about that. But what were some of the, and you know, what was the, give me one value that really jumped off the page for you. By the way, we're going to collect all of these, we're not going to lose a word of it. So that's, that's why I asked you to hand it in. And if we call you up and ask you to clarify something, that's what it's about. Yeah, you had a thought? Okay, you got to be careful if you do this, you know, it's like an auction, sold right over there, okay, yes, sold, escape. So this is for folks who are listening in.
So for values, we came up with long-term planning, but also working with unity and embracing everybody's culture.
Okay, so long-term planning, unity, culture. Over here, one of the values that you heard about.
I think maybe being heard.
Being heard. Uh huh, okay. That's, that's a gift beyond measure, right? And that's what we're here for today. One of the values that came out of your conversation.
Adam, ours, relational community values.
All right. Relational, obviously relational values and community values. And we kind of put it like Livingston's unique because it's culturally diverse and it's a big melting pot with different ethnic groups and cultures, so that kind of contributes to the values of Livingston.
Very good, thank you, thank you. And let's see, back here, one of the values that emerged in your conversation. Something you heard.
Well, it has been already been discussed, but working together, training.
So it's community, working. Together and what we can do when we do that, yeah?
Commitment, loyalty.
Mm-hmm.
Communication.
Communication. Pride, pride, okay, yeah.
Oh, I was going to say pride.
Pride again.
Diversity, unity, belonging.
Belonging, belonging, okay. Yeah, you know, you go to a big city and you know, you may not, you may walk down the street and never see anybody you know. My guess is that isn't true here, right? You can't do that here, right? You're not going to get away with that here, okay? Somebody knows, somebody's watching, right? Okay, all right. So there's, there's another thing that I like to look at and again, it's a story. I want you to think of a story and I want you to work in your table on this story. And this story is a headline article in a major publication. Now this says in 10 years, okay? And it says a newspaper, well, if there's a newspaper in 10 years, I'll be flabbergasted, you know? But there'll be a way that we talk to each other, you know, and suddenly Livingston is national news and it's 10 years from now. And when you think about what 10 years ago was like, anything that you can imagine is not going to be enough. Just, just remember 10 years ago what the world was like or 10 years before that. I remember, any of you old enough to remember 9/11? Where you, you know where you were that day and the next day, everything changed, right? And all of those people that had strategic plans, because all the rules changed, the whole world changed in a single day, right? And lately, we've seen radical elections, you know, when Obama was elected, that was a radical change. When Trump was elected, that was a radical change. We've seen these radical changes in our community that no one could have imagined. So the challenge right now is to use your imagination, to come up with a headline. And this is not a disaster, this is a good news headline about Livingston, that we have gotten national recognition in 10 years from now. I, I just briefly, walking around the room and meeting you, I would feel very confident leaving you in charge of that and in 10 years, we would have something that would be nationally recognizable, okay? So the challenge, and again, this is a mind trip I want you to take together. So what's the name of the publication? is a mind trip I want you to take together. So what's the name of the publication? What's the story? What's it about? And there's a little worksheet there to fill out. So have that conversation at your table. And I can give you about 10 minutes on that one too, and then we'll do a report out on that too. We're going to collect all of these, none of this is going to get lost. So, okay. So, national publication, major event, it's about Livingston. Headline, front, front page. You know, I, I used to use a wine glass for that. There's nothing like that, you know, a ding of a wine glass in a room to quiet everybody down. But then I'd get so snocered by the end of the night that it just wasn't good. So I use a little chime for instead. Okay. So, now, I'm very curious, let's start, say, over in this, this corner here. So what is your headline? And then just briefly tell us how you got there and what it, what it, what it means. So, and who's reporting? And grab this microphone.
Well, I know some of the council members have heard, but it's because I come to a lot of the city council meetings here. But I'm, we're involved with Strong Towns, which is a national, it's actually North America, Canada and mainland. And they've been in existence for 30 or 40 years and they build strong towns. And they'll go in and help, just like we have a moderator tonight. It's just great. So we got the award across the country, to be the strongest town in North America.
Okay, all right, strongest town. So as we, as we think about this, I want you to think a little bit about, the second round of this is what are three things that the article will talk about as the strongest town? Why did we get that reward? So, shifting to this table, your headline is?
Written very poorly, but it's a small town provides safe family environment for its residents.
Say, what, wait, what do we do when we hear it? Okay, very good, all right, all right. You know, let's cheer each other on, you know, okay. So, okay, so I want you to think about three bullet points that will be in the article, that we'll add those in there, okay? And, okay, so, and here we have, ooh, 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 I love this. Wait a minute, I'm old, I don't know if I love that. Okay, what's the story?
Extra, 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 read all about it. City Livingston has the youngest city council membership throughout the nation. It's a reflection of the community's youth that are involved. They're informed and they're invested in our community.
All right, all right, okay. You've already got bullets on that one. All right, good. Excellent. Okay, all right.
So for us, the city of Livingston, from the last stop to the only stop, known for best community in the nation for its safety, to raising a family, and for a thriving business community.
We've got, we've got some bullets there already. So, from the last stop to the only stop. I love that, I love it. Ever since the Blue Bear Hill Cafe shut down, anybody remember that? Yeah, you know, we just go right by, you know. Well, that's not okay. All right, okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, we, we decided-
We were looking at Livingston and thinking about the sweet potato capital of the world. Livingston feeds the world. Right?
So again, a couple of bullet points on that, you know, what, what we're doing differently as we, as we begin to think differently about the future. Okay, so, what do we have here? It's getting down there. Okay, all right. Oh, okay, all right. Are you ready? You ready to report? Okay, yeah. Anybody?
So this was actually sponsored by Ms. Mendoza's comment on Livingston Medical Group. We have a lot of believers in universal healthcare at this table. So we wrote, Livingston becomes first Central Valley city to open universal healthcare facility.
And overnight, the population doubled, right? Yeah, okay, all right. So think of some bullets for that, because this is going to be a chart. Okay, are we ready? Did everybody else go? Yeah. Okay.
So, we got it, the name of our, there you go. The name of our newspaper is called The Beat of Livingston. And our headline says, The Pride of Livingston Opens Its Door, Rexplex Awesome Indoor Fitness, New Senior Center, and a Great Community Gathering Place.
Okay, so, if you'll just take a couple minutes and put some of those bullets up there that you said, or add it to it on the chart itself, if you've got some room, we'll, we'll copy those, we're going to photograph all those things, and we're going to collect your worksheets and we'll compile that stuff to build that. So talking a little bit about vision, you know, does anybody, so sometimes I realize I'm the oldest person in the room, and that might not be a bad thing, right? We'll, we'll flip on that, okay? And, but does anybody remember Kennedy's speech about going to the moon? You've seen it, right? You've seen it, where he's talking about, in, in 10 years, we're going to put a man, not a woman, a man on the moon and bring him back, right? Now, I remember watching our efforts. Meanwhile, I'm out in my backyard, watching every night this Russian satellite fly over my house. Every night, you could see it going over your house. And we, we had these rockets that would go up like this, collapse, and go up like this, fall over. You know, we could not get anything off the ground. And he's saying, we're going to go all the way to the moon and back, you know, when it was impossible to conceive of it. The science didn't exist to do that. That's called vision. That's called vision. So it doesn't have to be realistic. It has to be real. There's a difference, you know. So my vision as the one only stop, if that is my vision, I'm going to behave differently than, than if it's, won't you please stop in our little town, you know? It's a whole different approach. You take a different attitude, right? If I'm looking at, it's a real safe environment, what does that mean? You know, how, how does that play? How did we get to that? What did we do differently than all the other communities in the, in the state, in our country right now, where there's very few places that feel safe in this country right now, right, for most people? So, strongest town in America, I really want to know more what that means, okay? So, I've been working out lately, I got that, okay. So, but what is the strongest town in America? And how did we get that? How did we get that? None of these things are at all out of line, if you think about 10 years from now, and you think about going to the moon from having nothing. It's a matter of having a clear, shared vision. Now, there's a problem with visions. If you're the only one having them, any of those in mental health, no, they put you usually in a jacket that kind of fits like this until the meds take effect, right? Having visions alone is not a good idea. But having visions as a community, having visions together is unstoppable, unstoppable. So as we look at these things, you might look across at that other table, what are they smoking? You know, what's, where do they think that would happen? Well, guess what? They're smoking what we need. And it's not weed, okay? It's the future, okay? They're smoking. Okay, so, so, a couple of bullet points on that if you don't have them already. But what we want to do is create something that's so vivid that we want to go for it, right? you said, or add it to it on the chart itself if you've got some room, we'll copy those, we're going to photograph all those things, and we're going to collect your worksheets and we'll compile that stuff to build that. So talking a little bit about vision, you know, does anybody, so sometimes I realize I'm the oldest person in the room, and that might not be a bad thing, right? We'll flip on that, okay? But does anybody remember Kennedy's speech about going to the moon? You've seen it, right? You've seen it, where he's talking about in 10 years, we're going to put a man, not a woman, a man on the moon and bring him back, right? Now, I remember watching our efforts. Meanwhile, I'm out in my backyard watching every night this Russian satellite fly over my house. Every night you could see it going over your house. And we had these rockets that would go up like this, collapse, and go up like this, fall over. You know, we could not get anything off the ground. And he's saying, "We're going to go all the way to the moon and back," you know, when it was impossible to conceive of. The science didn't exist to do that. That's called vision. That's called vision. So it doesn't have to be realistic, it has to be real. There's a difference, you know? So my vision as the only stop, if that is my vision, I'm going to behave differently than if it's, "Won't you please stop in our little town?" You know? It's a whole different approach. You take a different attitude, right? If I'm looking at, it's a real safe environment, what does that mean? You know, how does that play? How did we get to that? What did we do differently than all the other communities in the state, in our country right now, where there's very few places that feel safe in this country right now, right, for most people? So strongest town in America, I really want to know more what that means, okay? So, I've been working out lately, I got that, okay? So, but what is the strongest town in America? And how did we get that? How did we get that? None of these things are at all out of line if you think about 10 years from now and you think about going to the moon from having nothing. It's a matter of having a clear, shared vision. Now, there's a problem with visions. If you're the only one having them, any of those in mental health, no, they put you usually in a jacket that kind of fits like this until the meds take effect, right? Having visions alone is not a good idea. But having visions as a community, having visions together is unstoppable, unstoppable. So as we look at these things, you might look across at that other table, what are they smoking? You know, where do they think that would happen? Well, guess what? They're smoking what we need. And it's not weed, okay? It's the future, okay? They're smoking. Okay, so, so a couple of bullet points on that if you don't have them already, but what we want to do is create something that's so vivid that we want to go for it, right? I think every one of you have a really good start on that. And I think when we combine these things, we'll look at that and council's going to be kicking these around and thinking about where do we go? But when we decide we're going to the moon, then everybody has a job, right? Everybody has a job when we're going to the moon. You know, my job is building a rocket, your job is building a space suit, and your job is figuring out how to have Tang on there or something, you know, because that's what they had when, Tang is from the space program, yeah. Okay, so, all right, so, a couple more minutes, just fleshing your thing out, and we're going to collect those and we'll do the last step that we're going to do.
Give me a bullet point.
Okay?
That's what, that's what I'm trying to do. We're trying to, you know, we just did our general plan, and to revitalize the Main Street, walking all the way down, and places where you can have coffee, sit and, you know, hook in in that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Right. And people would have porches, you know, the, I sit and listen to the mayor of Oklahoma, how he turned his city into a city where people wanted to live when it was the worst. So yeah, so that's, walking.
I actually, I go for my walk in the evening when it's dark. I do actually really see, which I think is a good, I feel like a good.
I voted safer city in Central California.
So we'll put safe to walk, to down, to down through the, safe to walk, oh, safe walking environment, safe walking environment.
So would that be the one? Would that be one bullet point? So we need to.
So we have the police department, safe walking environment, and something about family, family.
Lots of recreation activities for all ages.
Something about community, and, or something about events that include, you know, or family.
You can actually make it.
Families.
And being an older person, I really love it. I feel a lot more safe if I knew that others there, that they're going to take over.
More green spaces. And recreation activities for all ages.
Right, right.
What do young people do? Do most of the young people stay here or do they move away?
Most, leave, especially to protocol it, and then it's a bit more difficult for them to come back.
Right, right. I've worked with several communities. You know? I think, I'm.
And see, in our neighborhood, we have this, we have Hispanic, and then, we have, yeah.
The white people, we're only in like 10% according to.
We're a minority, yeah. We're a minority in that, but I'm kind of half and half.
I'm way more used to this.
But yeah, they're, and you know, to be able to take those, the diversity, and still keep it safe, because you know, sometimes certain cultures may have certain, like, I don't know, I don't want to say gangs or anything, but you have, everybody has to feel comfortable living next to each other, you know?
No, I get it. So I don't know.
But I don't know how to say that.
I feel like most events are pretty likely over control ties in different cultures. I don't know how to say it.
Yeah.
The best for all ages.
Yeah.
Yeah. Honestly, the rec center is like a huge thing to keep this up here. The rec center, hopefully, will do that and stuff.
Yeah. In sports, ooh, you could do, for all ages.
You could also do, I don't know how to phrase this. I'm trying to like figure out how to like phrase it. But it's more than just like events, though, it's like offering outreach to the city. Like you can do like outreach events for the community, specifically thinking about like the rec center, like you can offer classes, which I guess we technically consider an outreach. Sorry.
How about that type? Events, sports, and outreach events for all ages.
I like that.
Okay. So, I think so too. I think so too, that's a good word.
Reach out and see if you can, it's hard to pull in, sometimes have to like.
And that changes.
Yeah.
That changes from the millennials to Gen Z to this to that.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah.
I know, I'm an old person now.
I'm still a baby boomer.
They keep talking about the youths, and I'm like, that's me, and then I'm like, no, it's not me anymore. They used to be talking about me when they talked about youths. I'm not anymore. I'm not a youth anymore.
Well, all I know is communicating with my grandchildren is altogether different now.
Yeah.
When sometimes I think, well, you haven't called me or come by, but they're texting all the time. And to them, that's socializing, and you're going, well, that's not how I socialize. So yeah, it's hard.
Oh, we should put third spaces on.
We can still put it.
We can put it in a safe walking environment.
And under which one?
Under that one, like third space, free third spaces. A third space, it's like somewhere besides your house, your school, or your roadways, where you can gather.
Oh, okay.
I highly know.
Common?
Concrete common spaces.
Common areas?
Yes, common areas.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's gathering, so. I feel like that coupled with a walking environment, I mean, those can be like coupled together. Yeah.
Social areas for women?
For like gathering.
Oh, oh.
I would just say for gathering. Sorry, you triggered that in my brain when you were talking about like how kids coming out and stuff these days. Because I was reading that like there's no more like free third spaces anymore. Like you either have your house, or you have like.
Your job.
Your school or your job, that kind of come together. And the third spaces used to be like malls, because you could go there.
Parks.
Parks, places you could go where you don't necessarily have to spend money.
Library.
But you feel welcome and you can like.
You could hang out there without somebody saying you're ordering.
Exactly.
Right.
And I feel like some kids don't have to go.
Yeah.
Livingston has it. I actually see all this, my veterans part, there's like the, some like gentlemen are always gathered there in the afternoon, which I think is just the most adorable thing.
Yeah.
I'm like, it's so cute that they gather together.
Yeah.
They do it over at the court hall too, where they have like little gatherings in the afternoon, just like talk to each other, and I'm like.
There's Hispanic gentlemen that come every day, the older one, and play cards and that.
Yeah.
Then they go home at night. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And for times after school, I'll see the kids like in the park, talking to each other before they, you know, like walk home. And it's like.
One minute, and we're going to do a second report out. One minute.
Right. Okay. I feel pretty strongly, we're pretty, we're on track. Oh, you know, I'm going to add something, because we recently have a situation with shutting down our fire department, remember? Yeah. Because we don't reciprocate our taxes with the Merced County, they chopped our fire department.
Oh.
And we're still at a safer webs, safer grant to try to get, to stay open for extended period of time and that. If not, we're going to be serviced by Delhi and Bellico.
That's so far away, though.
Yeah. So I'm a fully staffed fire department.
Then you can start.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's kind of weird. I don't know. I'm coming here with, it was a volunteer fire department up until I was in college. And then they were like, oh, we better incorporate a fire department, and it was a huge fight. By what? Six hundred? Yeah, it was like a thousand.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to hear a little bit deeper dive into these headlines now. And again, you know, when Kennedy said, all he said was, "I'm going to get a man to the moon and back in 10 years." That's a pretty broad thing, you know? So this is, and that was your first guess on, first view on this. This is an amazing, every one of these headlines, if they became true, we could feel really good about our town, couldn't we? Really, any one of these, any one of these. But as we're looking at these, what are some of the specifics that it would require to get there? And that's what we're looking at now. And someone asked, "What are you going to do with this stuff, right? Is this just a fun exercise?" Not at all. It's a way of looking with many eyes in the community of what we could be, and then our leaders in response to that can craft better planning, better vision, better future for us. So, so will we actually, will one of these headlines actually come true? It might, it might. Just imagine, you know? Imagine that one, imagine that one. I mean, so, but in general, will this open view that you're offering contribute to better decision making? It can't help but do that, right? It can't help but do that. So that doesn't mean that your particular headline is going to come true, but the essence of what that's about, the thinking that goes into that, the creative, that's what's going to build our strength. So, starting over here, so Livingston feeds the world, big deal, that's the byline of every single valley town, we all feed the world. But they've taken it to a new level, and?
We elaborated, we elaborated and added a, "Superfood Feeds: One Mind, Two Body, Three Soul," along with some illustrations. And linked to this was sort of the concept of like, wouldn't it be cool to just solve and end hunger?
So, "The Sweet Potato Capital of the World," right? So that's a sweet potato. Those are sweet potato fries, and if you don't live on those, you're not living, right? But feeding the mind, body, and soul. Okay. Ooh, do you want to be part of that vision?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. City of Livingston, okay, the big challenge, we're still even working on it, we can't stop, right? It's just, so, the big challenge is from the last stop to the only stop. So what, and we started with this, but what were some of the things that grew out of this that are going to be required for us to achieve that status?
All right, I think in terms of, we're trying to make something unique out of what other communities kind of sets us apart from other communities, right? So something that we came up with in terms of infrastructure and bringing in economic development into our city would be something similar to how a Coachella-type of festival, but totally different because we have, like I said earlier, a melting pot of cultural, so a Livingston Unity Fest on a bigger scale. And you kind of tie in the infrastructure, you bring in folks that are on the, like, the state side of the planning and, you know, and that can help us with making our city bigger, right? And there's some things that we need to work on first before we get there, like water issues, and you have our tax sharing agreement so we can expand our city, and then come to, hopefully this comes to fruition.
So this idea of making an event and using that to draw people in, to economic development, tell your story to the outer world, is it affordable?
Yep.
So I wrote that down. You didn't actually put it under, "The Sweet Potato Capital." All right. And now, from the kids' table, okay? From the kids' table.
Kids' table.
All right, so, something that we came up with is the youngest city council membership in the nation, but some of the areas that we were trying to brainstorm and focus on, one is having the youth be informed, involved, and invested. You know, that would be one of the ways to be able to accomplish our goal. And then the second goal was more green spaces for recreation activities for all ages. And the last one, this one, we had a more of a hard time kind of putting it into words, was to create more new business opportunities. Because we were going back and forth, and it's not just business opportunities, but more employment opportunities. Because there's often times when we have a new business coming to town, but only employs very few people. So what could we do to bring business opportunities, but at the same time have a very large number of employment opportunities? And among, one of the, one of the things that we came up with was, you know, having a nearby distribution center that could, we're close to the, we're close to the freeway, we're close to, you know, in the middle of the state. We can go either way, towards the Bay Area, towards up in the mountains, down south, up north. So we're in a very strategic spot in the state, so, and then with that, obviously it's going to come more tax revenue, more homes needed, and so on. So just another reason to bring your family to live in Livingston.
Okay, excellent, excellent, good, okay. I'm getting more excited as we go through this, okay. All right, so what did you add? Now, this is, "The Small Town Provides Safe Family Environment for Its Residences," and so, go for it.
We started with our award-winning police department. Safe walking environment with social areas that are available for all. We talked about not having enough areas to where, I mean, you feel safe in your home, you go to work, but you need to be able to go someplace else to socialize that doesn't always cost money, and that. So, and then we put events and sporting, event, sports, and outreach events for all ages, because again, getting everybody involved. And then we put, very top of my mind is a fully-staffed fire department, because that's how you feel safe as well.
Okay. So I'm hearing from all of us, this sense of taking it from feeling safe to really looking at some wheels on the tires, or tires on the wheels on the car that's going to get us there, right? You've started to put some rubber on that one, and that's good. Okay, excellent. I like the idea of thinking about public spaces as ensuring safety in public spaces, because more and more, that's a draw. There are people who do not leave their house in some cities. They're afraid to go outside, and when you can offer that, whoa, who's not going to want to come here, right? As long as they're the people that aren't going to scare you. Okay, okay, now, so Livingston recognized as the strongest town, and it is a field of flowers, flowering opportunities. Tell us about it, and use this microphone if you would, okay?
You're going to talk?
Okay, all right, you got it.
So we came up with several things. One, we want a thriving downtown, local businesses, more safety, also to have an environment, conscious awareness and taking care of what we have, opportunity for our youth, thriving economy, we all want to be seen and heard, and good quality of life.
Questions about that?
So, economy, opportunities for youth, so there's some common themes that are running through here. Are we hearing this electives, right? You know, and this is stuff you know, but this is reinforcement for what you know and support for what you know. Economy certainly, being seen and heard, local business, thriving downtown, and again, safety, so. Okay, and now, the first with universal healthcare, so tell us more, what you got?
Okay, so, okay, so we came up actually with four, kind of overlapping, healthier, a healthier community, for sure, because you, everyone would go and take care of themselves, they wouldn't have to pay anything. Because you, everyone would go and take care of themselves, they wouldn't have to pay anything. And that's a big barrier, especially for our community, that we have a lot of low-income residents. And then financial security affordability, so it would give more security, um, you know, it would be more affordable, kind of like, so they, they would be healthier, but they, and, but they would go more because it's more affordable. So it kind of ties in. And then more dollar spend in Livingston businesses, because probably other people would wanna come around and, and even like the, if we would open it up like that, we would have a lot of doctors, a lot of nurses, a lot of staff, receptionists that would be coming in here, probably from other places to work here, so they would bring a lot of, uh, uh, you know, they would be, um, using our businesses to eat, or, you know, whatever, to, for gas and all that. But then, uh, so, um, we were talking actually of what really this would be, and it would be like a holistic approach, because we would not only be addressing the, the, the physical aspect of health, but rather the mental also, which is more important than anything else, because, uh, we see how mental illness affects everyone. And a lot of it has to do with economics, you know? When people are stressed about what they're gonna eat, you know, if they're gonna be able to go to the doctor, because we have a lot of underinsured people, or no insured people, that have, don't know insurance, uh, so they don't go to the doctor. They're afraid, that creates a lot of stress. So we came up with that holistic view of, uh, that it would be an integrative way of, of, uh, solving many things in our committee.
And well done. So, you know, when I hear these things, I wanna say, yes, 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 and I, I remember when I grew up, you know, I would sit on Santa's lap and I would tell Santa all the stuff I wanted, you know? And I didn't get everything that I asked for, and sometimes I didn't get anything, right? It was like that sometimes, but, but if you don't ask, and if you don't think, and if you don't dream, you're just gonna get stuck with what you've got. And actually, I'm hearing what you've got's pretty good, but what's your, what your vision is, is boggling, isn't it? Think about it, it's really boggling, it's, it's really powerful. So, who's gonna report here? Okay? Let's put this up, I'll hold this up so they can see it, and you can... Okay.
Uh, so, we encapsulated with the phrase, "We value people, place, and culture", and so the RecPlex would be an opportunity to have, you know, an opportunity to help mental health, for example. You can go someplace where other people are, to do something like gardening maybe, or, um, how, maybe we can hold some education, you know, for, or, or things for people to do together. It would provide a place for your mental health, for your physical well-being, um, and for a community to come together. A safe place, a multipurpose community space.
Kind of themes are we, were we feeling here? What kind, what are we hearing? I'm sorry? Safety? Mental and physical health? Financial stability? Opportunity to grow, and, and that was manifest in several of these different ways. And, and the challenge, both for, for electeds and for our planners, is how, how are we gonna grow? And how are we gonna do that in a way that will not just add acreage or add housing, but add the kind, the quality of life that you're talking about, right? That, that helps us make those decisions. As a planning commissioner, you know, there was what the plan said, and there was what the citizens want, and the planning commissioners, you're stuck in the middle and you've gotta figure out what's the right answer here, right? So, as electeds, appointed, as citizens, what's the right answers? And there, there's, there are multiple views of this, that's what's enriching about this. It can be a little bit frustrating, but the opportunities are there, and as we consolidate this stuff, it's gonna be very helpful. Okay, other observations? Green spaces, opportunities as we grow, to make sure that there's places to, to recreate, that attract young people, that keep them here, that keep old people moving, right? So we don't end up stuck. Other thoughts? Okay. Oh, yes, thank you. Okay.
The one thing I think of in particular is traffic. And not ten years down the road, I'm talking about like bin, the traffic increasing, people driving like maniacs in certain places, especially when the roads are open and that allows them to just, so, when I, I really think of safety in that way, children or elderly who can't cross that quick, is the traffic and, and doing more preventive stuff. And I don't mean putting a, a police car at the corner that everybody knows there's nobody in there. And, and, but, a bit, those barriers or whatever they put on the road, something to, to, to kinda just slow them down, which is huge.
I, I have a personal thing, I have two cats, a dog, and almost a kid in front of my house from speeding cars. And it took us a year of, uh, getting petitions filled out to get speed bumps. And there are people who love them and people who hate them, but I love watching the cars go by slowly in front of my house instead of speeding by whacking my animals, right? So that's one approach. There's other ways to think about traffic design to be friendly for neighborhoods, and also enable me to get where I need to go. I mean, you know, I can't be stopping at every intersection and get to work on time, so there's, that's where we call on our planners to, to listen to our concerns and then come up with that creative stuff, okay? So the last exercise we're gonna do is on the page, and, um, it's a vision. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna get twenty-six visions. And, uh, again, it's sort of like a bee's eye, or a fly's eye, or a wasp's eye, where twenty-six cameras are looking at the world. And so what I'd like you to do individually is fill out this template, so it says "vision formula" on the back there. And Livingston is a blank, blank community. So, you know, you might wanna say "safe, healthy, uh, or prosperous, dra, dra, dra", but put two adjectives down to describe our community. Where, who? People, young people, old people, uh, people with, uh, you know, pick, pick your person. We don't need one universal state where everybody, I mean, of course, everybody, but you know, be specific about that. Where people experience what, so that what? So one thing I'm hearing is where young people have places to play so that they stay healthy and they don't need medical care, right? That might be one answer to that. There's no wrong answers, but we're gonna share these visions and think about that, and as we move ahead as a community. You know, we have twenty-six people here, how many people in our community, Mr. City Manager, total? Okay, so we got a fair representative sample, but not quite, I mean, there's more voices out there. But what we're gonna be able to do is put out something and then get feedback from those folks. I really wanna appreciate every one of you who took, took the time to be here tonight. I know everybody has had a hard day already, and I have too, I was busy doing stuff today. But, uh, I, this is really important for the future of our community, and I thank you for that. So that's the answer. And then, together in Livingston, we, what is it, the core action that we do? What is it we do? We think together, we care about each other, you know, there's no wrong answers here. To ensure what benefit for who, okay? So I'd like you to put together your draft vision statement, and then we're gonna listen to those. So we're gonna give you about six minutes to do that, wordsmith it, play around with it. Imagine this, uh, you know, uh, being held by the Statue of Liberty in her arm, right? Her, her piece about welcoming the, the disaffected peoples, kinda, people forgetting about Statue of Liberty right now, but, but that, that's really a meaningful statement there. So what's our meaningful statement about our community, okay? No wrong answers, no wrong answers here. Six minutes. If you already managed to do that, if you kinda got, snuck ahead and got that written down, go ahead and wordsmith it a little bit. Imagine this is, uh, you know, uh, you know, carved in stone in front of your city hall, right? That kind of thing.
Yeah. No, not until we finish, but I just know that it's starting to hurt that bad spot right now.
Take about one minute and, uh, and then we're gonna check out, check in and check out. Okay, okay, okay. So, I, I'm not gonna ask everybody, although if we do that, that's okay, but who, who's willing to share your vision statement? Who's, yeah, okay?
So mine is Livingston is a adorable upbeat community where residents bond together so that they can feel safe.
Okay, alright, nice.
I have Livingston is a stronger, uh, united community, keeping with our strongest over here, where we are one team and we build trust through transparency, and we are the people serving the people.
Anybody else at this table? I think we have time to listen to everybody, I think we do.
I'll read fast. Livingston is a thriving, connected community where we are all valued, valued, seen, heard, and engaged, and willing to find common ground, even if we have different perspectives, so that we can go farther together for the good of all.
Livingston is a rich, diverse community where ethnic groups unite so that we take care of each other.
Livingston is a safe and caring environment where elderly can live and walk so that they can enjoy their golden years. Kinda thinking about me a little bit.
Livingston is a safe and welcoming community where people of all ethnicities can walk the streets and feel safe so that, um, everyone's family grows proud of being Livingstonians.
Livingston is a vibrant and healthy community where all are valued so that everyone is empowered to live a fulfilling life.
Livingston is a family value community where each person can raise a family and where they will make lifetime memories.
Uh, Livingston is a thriving and diverse community where all walks of life come together to embrace each other so that Livingston's legacy of the only or the last stop lives on forever.
Livingston is a vibrant, multicultural community where everyone of different nationalities to enjoy life and live together as one so that the nation can see it is achievable.
Livingston is a vibrant, close-knit community where residents collaborate so that economic growth from new opportunity, opportunities and increased efficiency, environmental benefits, from green infrastructure, sustainable practices, improved social well-being through better services, community engagement, and enhanced, uh, public safety through efficient infrastructure and urban planning.
Livingston is a vibrant, active community where people of all backgrounds congregate so that all feel supported.
Livingston as a whole is a melting pot and where we can embrace each and every one of them together with pride and dignity, where people can be felt and heard and thrive. Come together, community can prosper and work together for a better, safer, healthier life. And of course, we've got the park wrecks. The next generation to come, God only knows who can come out of here, you know? And that in a whole, you know, when you give to a thriving young mind, that is very, very important.
Livingston is a safe, thriving community where families cooperate so that all are embraced and supported.
Livingston is a place that values community, where residents and government leaders work together so that the community recognizes they are valued.
Livingston is a walkable community. That question, these questions, they throw me for a loop because I spent like thirty years in Merced. I lived here, but I had no real connection here to, to, to this town. And everything that I do was in Merced, yoga, doctors, everything. So, it kind of just put me there that only came to the city council if it was something of urgency to a meeting, but don't really know a lot about this town.
Livingston is a diverse, vi- and vibrant community where each resident feels safe, included, respected, and heard so that our community thrives and feels happy.
But Livingston is a thriving, connected community where people feel safe, grounded, and at peace.
Livingston is a culturally, economic, and environmentally conscious community where individuals work with each other's differences to experience what it means to come together as one and feel connected.
Has everybody, has everybody said? So, closing comments by the mayor. Thank everybody.
Okay, so there's one, one more activity, but you know, I, I think all of us, and I, I think I can speak for the council. We want to thank everyone for being here, everybody that is watching and receiving texts and messages and say this, say that, and add this and add that. So, that tells me that we have a lot, a lot of people in this community that are invested and they want, and they want to know and they want to participate. So, thank you for participating and putting in the effort to really get this vision going on of where we want to be in the next three years, five years, and ten years, and so on. So, thank you.
All right, so we have our last activity that we have, and this one is going to be one of those rapid-fire ones because, you know, you try to capture, you know, I'm sure that everybody has some more things to say, but rather making it an activity, we want it to come out from you directly, and we're going to, we're going to jot those things down. So, I'll give you an example. You know, I'm sure that there's some folks out there that connect health and wellness to, you know, walking and trails and bike paths and so forth. So, somebody might be saying, you know, we would really love to see, you know, bike trails, a master plan bike trail with, with a, a walking path. So, as an example, okay? So, I, I don't want to steal nobody's thunder, so we'll go from there.
Two questions. What are you personally taking away today, either emotionally or mentally? What are you taking away from this experience? No wrong answers. And then, one statement, one, no more than two words about something, okay? And two words means two words with only two hyphens, so four words max, okay? So, and
Inspired.
Inspired, okay. Just fire them out, I'll repeat them for people to hear, yeah. Hopeful, hopeful. And if you, you also feel this, just say yeah, yeah on that, there's no wrong, okay? No wrong answers. What are you taking away?
Vested.
Vested.
I'm sorry?
Vested.
Vested.
We're in it.
Challenged.
Challenged.
Optimistic.
Soon, the sooner we get this over, the sooner we go home. Okay, yeah. Let's make this mark or smoke, okay? Encouraged. Uh-huh?
Green space.
Loudly?
Green space.
Green space.
Water park.
Water park. Give me just a moment. Community. Involvement.
What I think we all heard a lot was "safe."
Safe.
Valued.
Walkable.
Loudly, please.
Walkable.
Walkable.
The only stop.
Again?
The only stop.
The only stop.
We got one over here.
Trails.
We've got that, I mean, yeah, trails. What else?
Heard.
Heard.
I, okay, I want to confess, I forgot my hearing aid, okay? But there's people on the other side of the room that may not hear you, so belt it out, okay? What was it? Heard! I was so hoping that would come out. Yeah. Uh-huh, what else? Understood.
Enjoined.
Enjoined? Entertained. Enjoy. Okay, yeah.
Enjoy compared
Yeah. Uh-huh. I, I like this word, enjoin, uh-huh. What else? Teen.
More murals.
What happened to all my arts guys out here?
Opportunity. One more page worth?
Bike trails.
Bike trails. This is good, thank you.
Downtown facade program.
Downtown what?
Facade.
Facade.
Harvest market.
Retirement housing.
Okay. Three more, and, and we all get to go home.
But vibrant business community in downtown.
Vibrant.
And then, if you can add, public and private partnership or collaboration.
There you go.
Dog park for that.
Okay, I can only, it is smoking, it's starting to
For that amphitheater, that Fruit Barn Event Center, so we can host our Livingston Unity Event.
Uh-huh, okay. All right.
Ben and White, can you?
All right. I, I, you know, there's a theory in, in the stuff I do. You never really finish something because we're never going to finish this process, but you break it right in the middle, and that's what I'm going to do, both out of respect for your time, you've been at this without a break for two solid hours of really intense work, really intense work. I do this a lot, and I'm, I'm very impressed with what you've done. So, I want to say that, and I want to say that the last word has not been spoken. So, what happens next is, we would like to collect those pieces of paper that you've written on, and we'll incorporate that, the feedback from the charts, from that, and, and we'll be doing an evaluation of that, presenting it to the council for consideration, and based on, on what that makes sense out of that. Maybe more participation from the public when we put this out to get the feedback from them, to see how that works for them. It is the, the responsibility of the leadership team to set the tone, but we do that with our vision based on the people that we lead, right? So, thank you. I want to really tell you that I, I made a commitment to Monica. My kid lives in Sacramento, we're up and down this, this road a lot. And ever since the Blueberry Hill Cafe went away, I quit stopping here. But I am committed, this is a perfectly good place to stop on the way to Sacramento, so it will be the stop, okay, for, for at least my family. I'm looking forward to that. One last thing. Would everybody go over there and let me get just a group shot? And again, I'll, I'll wipe you out if you're, you're on, on yeah, house arrest or something. But everybody against the wall there so that we can record your
All right. Next to the, all those maps out there. RC. All right, Mark. That's, that's definitely me. Enter, Martina.
And years from now, we'll look at this picture and say, we were there.
Monica, your fingers are in the camera.
All right. Five, four, three, four, six, seven, nine, two, one. Gotcha. Okay, say Livingston, already say Livingston with your heart. Livingston.
Livingston!
Thank you so much.
Let's give Paul a round of applause. Thank you very much for coming out and helping us out. And I want to personally thank everybody as well. Have a good evening, and we appreciate your participation.